Okay. All right, you ready? Okay, if you all rise please, we're going to get to August 5th. Commissioner's meeting is opened up with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to all of our visitors this morning, and as usual, we're going to start off with Jason. There he is, back here.
Morning.
Morning.
Do you have a couple permits?
First is CNS Network, Wright Speed, Pine Pioneer Road to Alley Drive to the east, work in the right of way only. It's a bore, six two foot, in center township.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion made in second to approve the work from CNS Wright Speed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Then we have Comcast, six Queen to Quince, install a two-inch HDPE conduit with interduct and install cable within. It's a 942-foot bore in Oak Township for fiber optic.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion made in second to approve the request by Comcast. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, for Bridge 87, 11th Road, I have a change order number two for an underrun. So basically, for their final tallies, when everything was done, they came up with $57,062.70 for an underrun at $32,312.70 on Barrow, and field office is $24,750. And what you have is just a document for the change order to sign, just approving a savings.
I make a motion to approve change order number two. Any amount of, it's a reduction of $57,062.70.
Second. Motion been seconded, excuse me, motion been made in second to approve the change order on Bridge number 87 for $57,062.70. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Bridge 11, bridge work is all but completed, should be doing the final walkthrough next week. I gave you guys that information for the paving of Union Road, E and B paving. Bid proposal, US 6, Plymouth to Port Trail, Union Road, sorry, US 6 to Plymouth to Port Trail.
Is this work already done?
We're just finishing it probably today if the weather permits.
Basically, we need to approve that contract, correct?
Both, the bid documents and the contract too, agreement.
Didn't have been all done before.
The worst thing was, is that came in and we didn't have a meeting up two, and they were already there finishing up the bridge deck, so it's just kind of going retro.
What'd you say, both the contract, what else needs to be approved, Jason?
The bid.
Oh.
And then they had submitted the contract agreement as well.
Was this bid? It was a little bitter?
No, we just went with them. Ben's already out there for the contract on the bridge.
They were out there for the bridge. Did they do the bridge repair?
The Port Construction did the bridge, and that was what was on for the state, 100% of the contract.
And did the Port Construction bridge include doing this paving by E and B?
No.
So what was E and B doing after, just the approaches?
They did the bridge deck and the approaches out to it.
Okay.
So then while they were there, we just continued to have them do the whole thing.
But that was part of the Port Construction's contract with E and B?
No, the yes, the bridge part was, yes.
Well, how many, how, this looks like this is quite a bit of paving than on Union Road.
It was.
So why didn't we just bid this?
Well, the biggest reason was they were there and just had them continue doing right off the bridge decks and doing one continuous pour.
Yeah, I don't know that that's an exception to the requirements.
Did you know about this?
I knew, we talked about it in the Art Committee, and that's what's going to be part of the Art Committee presentation this morning, that...
But did you know they were paving?
I knew after the fact, yes.
What are you going to do with this?
Well, I think we, at this point in time, I don't know we got a lot of choice. I mean, it's something we talked about, was going to make a recommendation to do. Whatever, they were there, like I said, they went ahead and did it. But they did have approval from Highway Department.
Now we're stuck here looking at a $394,000 bill that, and, you know, in the past, you've always, well, we need to get quotes on stuff.
Mm-hmm.
We didn't get a quote on this.
No, we didn't.
Yeah, I think, I don't know how we can do anything different but approve it, but that certainly is not how we've done.
Don't want to do it again.
Exactly.
How are you paying for it?
Well, that's, it's going to come up, the art funds, he said.
That was the recommendation, do it out of the art, do it out of the art fund. That was what was going to be the recommendation here today. We had an Art Committee meeting a couple weeks ago, 10 days, two weeks ago, I don't remember exactly when.
And I will say that all of the art funds are scrutinized very closely, more so than any other fund, and the suspension and debarment clause that we had to do a corrective action plan last year for is, it comes up again, so they have to be verified. One thing State Board's looking for is to make sure that whoever we contract with is not suspended or debarred prior to us having the work done and being contracted. So that is one thing they will look for next year, is making sure that contracts are approved before work is done.
And the debarment and suspension was in the documents that I gave you two.
Okay.
Yeah, but this is contrary to all that stuff.
To me, getting a recommendation to do something is not an approval to do something.
Well, then, then you're being asked to approve something before you've even gotten to the...
Got the funding.
The funding business.
Yes.
So you're just doubling up on...
Clart, hell, the horse. I'm going to make a motion to table this until the next meeting. Because it's what Angie just said, and I know they've done the work, but, you know, some people are always harping on the commissioners about doing work without getting quotes, and here we did almost, what, $300,000?
$94,000.
$94,000 without getting a quote from anybody else, and, you know, we've always been, anything over 50 or 100,000, we need to get quotes. So I'm, I make a motion to table this and...
Second. Motion made second, table this till the next meeting, the August 19th. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Bridge number one, Yule Trail, was a local project. The application has been submitted, and this is the signature page.
I don't remember, Scott. I think this has got one signature.
I'll make a motion to let the President of the Commissioners sign the...
I think all three of you have to sign that one.
Letting date for...
I think that one's all three of you.
Okay.
Yule Trail.
I think Angie has to sign that one as well.
Second. Motion made second to approve the signature page for Yule Trail Bridge. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Where are we supposed to sign?
It's on the side over there that has Commissioners, I think, board. Bridge 232 Randolph Street, they're still on track for the 10-9-24 letting. This will sit for a little bit before construction begins. We expect this work to be performed starting in September of 2025 after next Blueberry Festival is finished, basically to allow for the maximum time to complete. 231, no updates. Bridge number 12, or Bridge 88, 12th Road, east of Olive Trail. Field survey has been, field survey has been completed. Red flag investigation approved, waters of the US report, fieldwork completed, archaeological and field rents completed for 521, and utility verification letting sent on 112. Bridge 108, draft agreement has been submitted to NDOT. Once approved, we'll be able to start contracts for review and negotiations. Mill Pond Dam, as previously discussed, in accordance with our hourly contract, we have estimated it will take us about approximately eight hours to perform the hydrologic calculation to determine if the purpose lining is sufficient. Included in that eight hours will also be review of geotechnical report prepared by Terricon, and that was DLZ. Bridge Agreement Contract for Board of Commissioners in Chain Lake.
Did you review this, Jim?
I have not.
Oh, with the Chain of Lakes, yes, I did review that. I sent you a couple of different emails, we made some changes to it. Make sure you were done.
Yeah, the, the last revision had Highway Superintendent and the engineer, was that who was going to, or no?
I thought, isn't Rob Cook going to follow up on this from USI?
Yeah. And that, I think that's what I put in the last addition revision kind of thing, so...
Motion approved.
So moved. Second.
Motion made second to approve the contract with Chain of Lakes, with all three Commissioners signing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Letter of understanding was submitted to NDOT for reimbursements for Redwood Road and 2B Road. I'm waiting to get that information back. EV Grant, finish up the Davis Bacon Training. Quotes have been submitted, are sent out for the Ford Lightning, they're due August 6th, and we'll be submitting quotes for the Chevy Silverado as well. And quotes have been submitted for the electric charging station hookups, and those are to be submitted by the 9th of this month.
Are those going through me, Tom, Jason?
Yes.
Yeah.
Lee is helping us with that.
Right.
Roadwork, chip and seal is completed as of 8/5. Redwood South, 14B, 20th, State Road 117 to Peach, Peach, 20th to State Road 110, 19B, State Road 17 to County Line, Queen, 20th to State Road 110, 18B, State Road 17 to Linden, Linden, 17th to State Road 110, 14th, Michigan to Juniper, Cedar, 12th, 9B, 19th, 331 to County Line, 6, 331 to Grape, Cedar, 10B to 9B, and 10B, 331 to County Line. That's all I got.
Jason, I have a proposal from Milestone Contractors for King Road. Are you going to address that?
Milestone Contractors, King Road.
Just to do, I think it's Scarif, Mill, King Road from Lincoln Highway to US 30? It's a proposal.
Oh, for the additional work, if I remember right now.
I believe so. Price includes milling machine with operators and water truck with driver?
Yes, I haven't, not yet today, no.
Need to be, okay.
No. I think it's all I got.
Jason?
The, just so you're aware, the City of Plymouth is looking, working with NDOT. I was contacted by Mayor Loesenberg to again take up the consideration of State Road 17 going to the city in downtown Plymouth, and by doing that, they would move State Road 17 out to Pioneer. So we may pick up from wherever the city line is on 17 out to Pioneer, was the discussion that was had, and I'm not sure where that city...
It's out there by the hospital.
Is it just beyond the hospital is what we were thinking, but we weren't exactly sure if it was Glen Overmeyer.
I think it's a little bit towards town more.
Okay.
So the city would be...
On Tall Oaks, they got a, they got a manhole, city does, on North, on North 17 there, Tall Oaks, but I don't know whether they have the, took in the highway or not, probably not.
Probably not.
So he just wanted us to be aware, it's in, it's in discussion, nothing's been finalized, but I wanted you to be aware also, you may want to discuss that with...
That was talked about years ago.
Yep.
So then the City of Plymouth would take up 17 in town?
Yes.
Then we would pick up the portion?
And then 17...
Out to Pioneer then?
Correct.
Okay.
State would pick up the county's portion of Pioneer.
Pioneer, right.
City, Pioneer, and then...
Yep.
They'd probably pick all that up.
Yeah.
Even the city's portion up to 30.
Yeah.
Yep. So because it's, they don't know how fast that'll get done, or if it'll get done?
Were they looking at any compensation?
Don't know.
Hasn't been talked about.
Hasn't been talked about because they're in negotiations, you know, with all the, because then the city picks up all the lighting, all the stoplights.
Slow plowing.
Slow plowing, so, you know, there's some horse trading going on.
By the way, putting it in.
Yes.
Anything else?
No, that's all I got.
Anything for Jason? Okay, thank you, Jason. She's got a grant she wants to apply for for CASA.
Good morning.
Morning. Morning.
Every year, CASA is given a matching grant opportunity through the state. This is for 2025. It is due the first of October usually. I wanted to get a jump start since it's budget time. Our grant for the matching part is $13,865 for next year from the state, which is quite a bit more than we received this year. So the county's match would have to be $11,786. That's usually in the Circuit Court budget. And then we also have an opportunity for a capacity building grant, which is $5,943. That does not have to be matched by the county, and those funds can only be used for volunteer retention, growing our volunteer group, and advertising and training. So those are separate, it's a separate grant, and again, you don't have to match that one, but those funds are not guaranteed until after the first of the year, will I know how much I get for that. With those two things, we will also still be short next year, approximately $30,000. I had sent a letter to all of you earlier with a copy of our budget and different things, so I just wanted to make sure you had that. And I also left you a QR code for the Indiana Youth Institute. Might help you in your job a little bit. There, it's, it's the Indiana Kids Count Data Book, and in there is a lot of information about the different counties in Indiana, where our kids are with their family and community, health, education, and economic well-being, and it actually lists Marshall County compared to other counties, so you can see where we can improve with helping our children, whether it be within the school system or different things, and I just wanted you to have that as a little extra help with doing everything you do. So thank you very much. I do appreciate having our office in the county courthouse. It makes it very much easier for me to be able to go to court and have meetings and whatnot, so thank you for that.
Will you be working with Judge Cerisi then?
Yes.
Excuse me. Okay.
Okay. And just so you guys know, I did make a comment, Judge Cerisi, that once things calm down, once, I'd like to have Chastity and her and the Commissioner, a Commissioner and a Councilmember, sit down and talk about funding going forward, how to make sure we get this funded every year, because in the past, they've tried to use some of the opioid funds and different things like that, where it wasn't a constant guaranteed flow of money. So just want to make sure we're going to get this funded, and I know Judge Cerisi has an interest in that to make sure it is funded, so, but that'll happen at a later date.
Very good, thank you.
Right now, they're just want to make sure we get you funded next year and move on from there.
Okay.
Motion approved.
Used to be in the general fund.
Used to be in the general fund, that's why I say it would be discussed, I guess.
They took it out last year.
They took it out last year, correct. And there was never, no intention, I don't believe, to not fund it, it was just to go a different direction in funding for it, but that's not a consistent guaranteed funding source, so...
The general fund was.
General fund was, but I think that's a concern now, to make sure we guarantee we fund it.
Does the states, are you on a January to December fiscal year?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the Chastity's request to apply for the grants, in the amount of $13,865, and in the amount of $5,943.
Second. Motion made in second to approve Chastity's request for CASA for the matching grant and the capacity grant. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Office Department, Sandy. Morning.
Sandy Dunphy, Administrator at the Marshall County Health Department. I'm just here to update you on our emergency preparedness grant. They finally sent the application through for our signature. The preparedness grant is something we have been, the Health Department's been receiving at least for the last five years. It's a $25,000 grant, this grant cycle, it's a five-year grant, that for five years, there'll be $25,000 available, and I plan to use this $25,000 to pay for half of the Preparedness Environmentalist salary, Paul's salary. The activities in the grant, we are already, I mean, that's part of his daily routine, so it's nothing additional, no further reach for him.
Just $25,000 even?
Correct.
And this is totally different from what our EMA Director does?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, this is, you know, for counties, and I'm not really sure everything that Jack does, I mean...
I make a motion that we approve Sandy's request to apply for the grant for $25,000 for the next five years.
Second. Motion made second to approve the request by the Health Department for the Public Emergency Preparedness Grant Cooperative Agreement, amount of $25,000. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Buildings and Grounds, John. Morning.
Morning.
So I have a proposal from DR Masonry, we talked about this last time, so this is in writing, for $23,800.
I make a motion to approve the quote from DR Masonry, the amount of $23,800 for sidewalk repair at the jail.
Second. Motion made second to approve the request from DR Masonry, the amount of $23,800 to replace the sidewalk at the jail. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I think they're still going to get that done this year, correct, John?
Yes, yes, he's scheduled already, so he's confident he's going to have it done this year.
Thanks for taking care of that, John.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Why did you trip? Did you trip?
No, just don't want anybody tripping.
No tripping, Paul.
The next thing I have for you is $4,601 for a, replacing the surge suppressor out there. The one we have is obsolete, and as fate would have it, we were talking about replacing it, and we got, took a hit, and so one of her phases is burnt out, and you can't get parts for it, so we kind of...
That's the original one, isn't it?
Yeah, from 17 years ago, so...
You got the money in the budget?
Yeah, this is, both of these are coming out of the Sheriff's Budget, I believe.
I make a motion to approve the quote from Herman Guts for the protect, for the surge protector, in the amount of $4,601.
Second.
Second. Motion made second to accept the quote from Herman and Gutz in the amount of forty-six hundred and one dollars for the surge suppressor, replace it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
That's all I got?
Thank you.
Must not be your standard surge protector.
Nope, no. Can't go to Walmart and buy that.
Older Adult Services, Janice.
Morning.
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 Janice Holliday, Executive Director of Marshall County Council on Aging. I'm here to seek approval for our second quarter claim to Endot in the amount of sixty-seven thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars. That is half of our net expenses. And that sixty-one thousand fifty-nine dollars would be from the federal fifty-three eleven fund, and then the six thousand sixty dollars comes from the state. So our total expenses for the quarter were a hundred and thirty-eight thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars. We did seven thousand five hundred and twenty-one trips last quarter. So the first six months were, were up over two hundred trips from last year again, so we're continually adding more trips as much as we can. We still had sixty-one denials in county. Those are just trips that we couldn't do, whether, and we do in-town Plymouth all the time, so these would be like from, you know, Culver to Plymouth, Bremen to Argus, all that kind of stuff. And then we also had a hundred and twenty-eight for out-of-county ones, and that's our going to, most go to South Bend, Michawaca, but we go to Indianapolis, Fort Wayne, anywhere over the northern half of Indiana, basically. So we still.
I saw a van up at South Bend Orthopedics at, don't know.
We go there a lot, yes, yes. We, we probably go to, to South Bend and Michawaca three or four times a day, actually. So that's my.
And what do the individuals pay for that?
It all depends. Our public rates are, the highest is eleven dollars. If anything over thirty-one miles is eleven dollars.
Okay.
Between five and thirty miles, it's six dollars, and then anything under five miles is two fifty. But we do have, a lot of our trips are paid through the Older, Older Americans Act for anyone over sixty going to a medical appointment up in South Bend, so we get some funds for that. We also are Medicaid providers, so Medicaid pays for a lot of them as well.
Anything else?
Well, I do have a couple of dates for you. Of course, the.
Yeah. Motion to approve the claim for sixty-one thousand fifty-nine dollars.
Second. Motion made second to approve the older adult services claim. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Want to make sure we invite you all to the Senior Expo, it's October seventeenth. We'll be at the high school again. And then also on October thirtieth, Endot will be coming here to do a, their four-year compliance review, and they will expect one of you to be available, at least one of you. All three of you would be lovely, but they will expect to, to be able to at least talk to one of you that day.
Is that November?
October thirtieth.
Remind us when it comes time, okay?
Yes, I certainly will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
A reminder on your phone.
Yeah. Museum, Sandy. I'm going to see her here.
Mike's here.
Mike?
Sandy's coming, so if we can move.
Okay. We'll move on. Can you talk? Can you talk?
You don't want me to talk?
Amen to that.
Cheap shots over there.
We'll move on down to the attorney report before we digress any farther.
Well, I'm sure that might still be a digression. Attorney Report under Old Business, we got our appraisal report from JAJ. I think I sent you guys all a copy of that.
Yep.
It's similar, obvious, it was similar, really, I was kind of surprised to the appraisal that the Bowen Center came up with. Both values even averaging far exceeds the purchase price that's been kind of kicked about between the Bowen Center and Commissioner Klotz. On behalf of the Health Department, given all of the circumstances, I, I don't see any need for a second appraisal, and. You know, I, I guess just from viewing what I know of the circumstances, whether, if you need it or not, or whatever the case might be, it looks like a heck of a deal, so that's, that's where we are with that. Roy Reynolds versus Marshall County, that's the, kind of the claim that's going for Mr. Reynolds against the county, having to do with the North Michigan Road incident last summer during a storm. Big limb came out of a tree, overhanging the road, and I guess hit the car. As I indicated at the last meeting, there was a, the tree inspection on the twenty-ninth, and Lisa Barron, who is the attorney for our liability carrier, reported to me that the inspector made no comments about the tree inspection, so we have no further things. She's trying to figure out, at this point, whether they would bother hiring a tree inspector to do it, but I keep telling her, I don't even know why we need to do that, so. I'll keep you apprised of that just because of the situation having a more major impact statewide on governmental, local government immunity. The.
I let Jake German from Barden to Hordenburg know about this because he's, he represents the Commissioners Association down there, so I made them apprised of that, and I made David Bogner from AIC apprised of this also, because they could have huge ramifications on every county and every state road.
Yeah, good, thanks, thanks for doing that. Under New Business, I didn't know whether the auditor wanted to bring up the Pitney Bowes lease agreement today, but I did review it. It's, the, the terms actually are slightly less than the previous lease. I did not go to that link and review all of those. You may want to do that, but I, you know, it's mostly boilerplate, and, and I, we haven't had any trouble with Pitney, Pitney Bowes in the past, and it's not that huge of a.
Becky Shaw, who I've been working with, she said, Becky Shaw, the person with whom I've been working, she said that is, it is boilerplate, she said the state uses the same agreement.
Yeah, I mean, I, I could charge you a lot of money to review the whole that stuff, but it doesn't seem like it makes any sense to do that.
Is that ready for?
Do you want to take that up today, Angie?
Can we, can we put it to the nineteenth? Just because there's one issue, we had a meeting with DASAC Consulting over 4D incentive relief. And I had one question, I want to double-check on this machine, because we have to track the child support, any mailings that go out for child support, because that is part of what we can recoup for cost, so I want to double-check that before we move forward, so if we can bring this back up on the nineteenth.
We already talked about the Chain of Lakes contract. The Health Department has asked me to review and put together an open burn ordinance, and so I'll give you a heads up that that's in the works, and probably to be presented in an upcoming meeting. If you've got questions, comments, suggestions ahead of time, you might get those to me.
What does other counties do?
Pardon me?
What does other counties do? Do you have any knowledge of that?
I think most of the counties do have an open burn ordinance. I think the ordinance is being proposed, it's going to stop campfires or things like that, but they're definitely aimed at.
Burning garbage.
Burning garbage.
Garbage, yeah.
I'm not, I'm not sure where we are with leaves, I haven't taken a look at your proposal yet, but.
Well, I mean, I, I think leaves still is considered garbage, but because it's natural refuge, we may have to pinpoint it down to from this time to this time. I would prefer we not allow burning of leaves at all, but, because again, it's garbage.
I can do some checking to see what some other counties do with the leaves.
I know, you get, we get calls every now and then about people concerned about open burning.
Yeah.
You know, we just, we have nothing we can tell them, we have, we have no ordinance in place.
Yeah, we, we took this up, it seemed like, years and years ago, and, and we, we at least thought we should stop any burning of garbage.
Yeah.
But I think that's as far as we, we were, so. The two things that didn't make my attorney report, because they came in late, but American Legal Publishing has completed our code of ordinances. They get, the auditor was nice enough to drop off this nice book the end of the week. She's got a couple others, but the beauty of all of that is it's digital, and it's going to be online, so anybody can go to and see the, the county ordinances online. I am.
Finally got done.
Finally got done. I haven't had a chance to review it, and I'm going to do that. If you recall, when we adopted the County Personnel Handbook, there was a adoption ordinance and it, and enabling kind of ordinance that you all approved, and I'm proposing to do the same, and so I'll, I'll have a draft of that at the next meeting, where in effect we approve the, and adopt the, the code of ordinances. And then one other thing that didn't make it on my report, I, I guess I was remiss in thinking about this, this is just a follow-up. The Holding Corporation Annual Meeting, we did hold after the last meeting, and thanks to John, and he left, I should have thanked him, he's here, and Angie for reporting to the directors, and then they ratified everything that's been going on, so they understand that their lifespan is fast approaching, you know, maybe the end, end of their need unless something else changes, so that was conducted and went, and went well. And with that, that's all I have.
And you have one thing while, while we're talking about under the attorney report is this Bowen building. We are under no obligation. Every discussion I have with Jay Baumgartner, I made very clear upfront, it was non-binding because we have three boards it has to go through. Let's see, we're at this point now, and with the quotes coming back, with the Health Department needing a place to go, because we certainly can't afford a hundred thousand dollars a year, over a hundred thousand dollars a year. I would like to make a recommendation that we push this, put this in front of the council for funding, I think this would be a proper procedure, put it in front of the council for funding at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If that's approved, again, and they seem to be in favor of it, then would, then we would submit an, an offer of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars based on a lease purchase agreement, they will give us a couple, couple of years to pay for it. But they want a large amount down, so we would put, you know, two, two fifty down, and we would have a deadline in a year, so, but that would be a contract you would draw up between their attorney and you, no interest, we would pay no interest, it'd be just a flat rate. This is what Jay has contacted me and said his board will agree to if we would make the offer of four fifty. And like I say, we have the potential to save about a hundred, depending on what we would do, which will be determined at a later date, we have the potential to save roughly probably about a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year and enter, so to me, it's a no-brainer, but, you know, I, I can't make a decision by myself. So I guess I would make a motion to move forward with that, let the council look at funding, and then should they agree, send it back to Jim to draw up a contract, and then bring it to us for approval, and then approved, we submit it.
Would they want us to make a, a proposed purchase agreement first and then?
Well, I think they're just looking for a contract, you know, what, what we would do, I don't think we necessarily need a purchase agreement, well, it'd be a combination purchase agreement, purchase lease agreement contract, I guess how I would phrase it.
Are we doing mowing out there?
We will, we will be, we are building.
Cleaning, are we going to clean it also?
We'll be cleaning, she has her own maintenance staff now that cleans. I've talked to, I've talked to maintenance, they said with this new machine they got, snow, snow plowing will not be a problem, and mowing shouldn't be a problem, they said they could handle it.
And what about the heating and air?
Heating and, that will have to be determined, there'll probably be a joint, something on that, because obviously our building somewhere we're going to pay for. But if we, depending if we put another department out there, whether it be split with the Health Department, that's all to be determined.
I talked to Kevin Conroy from Ideal, and I asked him about, as we are seeing COVID coming back into the county, about fresh air return in that building since it's not set up for medical, even, even though that one's probably not set for medical either, but if you're going to do, I, I think you need to look at that. But again, as I have said in the past, I'm not in favor of moving forward, I, I have said that I think it should be the new Commissioners and the new council when they come in to make this determination, because if something goes south, I'm not going to have somebody come back and say, well, he voted for this, and I'm not here to defend myself, so I, I, I'm not comfortable moving forward.
And I agree with that, I think this is, I have several questions about sending people to Dora Lane, which is difficult to get to. So the ease of getting, I mean, we still have, Denny has people coming in here to look for the Marshall County Health Department. And, you know, firstly, it's just down the street. So I, I question whether, I mean, it may be a great deal, don't get me wrong, I'm not, I'm not discussing the price or the good deal or not a good deal, I'm discussing the location and what's best for the residents of, that use this facility, and how much it's going to, in effect, cost over the long term with the HVAC system that will probably have to be modified for a health facility versus, you know, what it's being used for now. So, you know, I think that's a consideration that should be done by the incoming council members and commissioners. So I'm not going to second that stand.
Okay. I will tell you, we're under a month, month lease, we run the potential of having no place to go. In January first, because we do it January first, we're going to waste a lot of money in rent, and, and that's fine, I get your, I get your reasoning, okay? I, I, that's fine. So that's just the risk we take, I mean, the quicker we would do this, the quicker we would have some assurances to the public, and to your concern about Dora Lane, unless you build and buy the gr, nothing's going to be perfect. I mean, I'm sorry, there's going to be, there's going to be a hiccup somewhere, somewhere along the lines. I can, I can tell you, I've talked to Danny Manuel, it meets code as it was built, and at this point, everything's grandfathered in, so if that's the case, we'll wait, we'll move forward January first. Okay, thank you. Sandy, I seen you walk in.
Good morning.
Morning.
How are you guys today?
Good.
Good.
Oh, now he speaks.
That's all I'm going to say.
I'm Sandy Garrison, Director of the Marshall County Museum, and with me is.
Mike Miley, President, Marshall County Historical Society.
And we wanted to talk with you this morning about an idea that we have to hold a staff development session in service. We would like to actually get our folks out into the county to see some of the historic things in person. We think this would be a real enhancement to the services that we provide. There's just nothing like actually being able to see things in person in the county, and we want to make sure for our staff that they're as aware of some of the different locations as, as possible. What we were envisioning is going to Bourbon one morning. Karen Redinger, I don't know if you all know Karen on our staff, but she's been with the museum for a long time and is a walking encyclopedia of county history. Karen would do a downtown tour for the staff, point out a lot of the buildings that we talk about with folks that maybe aren't there anymore, but we can actually see, you know, where they used to be, just really get a feel for it in a, in a more representative way. We are also going to try to make an appointment with the Lemler family to see, I don't know if you've ever been to their personal museum, it's, it's quite impressive. Karen has taken me. Karen has taken me there, and I would love for the rest of the staff to have that opportunity too. Mike had a great suggestion in that we ask Linda, I know. Mike has lots of great suggestions, good teamwork.
Oh, there's so many comments that could be made right now. Hurry up.
Everybody's starting already.
I've never heard that comment.
As a way to actually not have to close for part of the day, to do this, that we checked with Linda Rippey, which we've already done, to see if she would be willing, as long as that's comfortable for everyone, to come in as a volunteer that morning. She would keep the museum open. We have several folks who are with us almost daily as volunteers that have, you know, a lot of training, could also be on site. So we would only be gone for a few hours, and those folks, I think, would keep the museum in good hands while we're away. So we just, we had spoken with Tori and then suggested that we come in and check with you all. I believe Mike has chatted a little bit, but we wanted to come and officially request the time.
I think it's a good idea, just to go with Bourbon, but to?
Culver also.
Culver and, you know, even Argus and Bremen.
Yeah.
And all the all the towns, so at least those people in those communities know who you folks are.
Right.
We've been to Bremen, and we'll probably go back again, because there's still a lot of a lot of places in Bremen history over there. But unfortunately, we had to we had to bring staff in on a Monday when the museum was closed, and we had to pay overtime for the staff. So we're trying to avoid that. That's why we'd like to do it in the morning and staff the museum with volunteers.
Okay.
Our hours are different because of being open on Saturday, we're closed Sundays and Mondays.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea.
Motion to approve the request.
Second. Motion made, second, to approve the in-service request from the museum. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, sorry, I was a little late today, I had a doctor's appointment, so I thought I was doing really good.
I'll stick up for you because you were a big help last week. Thank you.
You bet.
Thanks, guys.
It's what I do.
Oh, boy.
There's a lot of comments on that one, too, right?
Yeah.
Argus report.
I have your July 15 minutes, but Kevin, you are not here, so.
I'm standing currently.
Second, motion made, second, approve the July 15 minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Two with one extension, two O with one extension, please.
And I have the accounts payable claims.
I'm making a motion to approve the account payable claims.
Second.
Motion made, second, approve the accounts payable claims. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
And I have payroll claims.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion made, second, approve the payroll claims. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. You have anything else, Angie?
That's all I have.
Now comes the time of public comments. Does anyone here from the public have a comment they want to make? Dave, come on up.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good day.
Another day in paradise.
Another day in paradise.
I'm in Marshall County.
Please state your name and address.
My name is David Hosteller, 133 North Yule Trail, Waukatoan address, and right now, your bridge number one is on my property, but that's that's not a that's not a big deal. I appreciate, I got forms I had to sign, and so I know the process is going. That's not what I'm here about, but.
You're prepared to volunteer to pay for it.
I don't think the comment need to be made after that.
Tollgate, okay, I love it.
But thank you, I appreciate your interest in me paying the counties. But I am here in reference to my position as President of the Plan Commission. I technically feel I report to this board, or our commission reports to this board. And so I know I've seen, I watch some of your meetings, and I thank you for this. It's really, really well done. But I've got myself in an awkward situation that I'm not very happy about, but it's a fact. It is where we are.
Can I stop, Dave? Just tell her about your position on the board, sort of.
I am the President of the Plan Commission.
Thank you.
And and these are appointed positions. These are not elected positions. I get a lot of phone calls, hey, you know, we voted for you. You know, I hate to say that out loud, but I mean, it's like, oh, my gosh, give me a break here. But I it's been an honor, literally, it's been an honor, and and I've learned a lot, both good and bad, about how our county government works, but it is what it is. But I'm in a situation now, according to what I understand, the rules of the game were, that if I felt we needed legal representation in our meeting or to help us make decisions in this process, that I could have our attorney present at those meetings. And now I'm being told through Ty, they had not personally talked to me about this, that they will no longer allow that to happen as long as, well, allow it to happen as long as it's not for certain items on the on agenda. I have to make sure the agenda's posted. That's something Ty and I go over. Ty does forward the agenda to me, and if I have concerns or comments, I reply back to him before they're officially published. But a couple comments on that. What that does is now I've got the plant, the county council directing what I can put on the agenda or what I can't have on the agenda. And, you know, to me, that's kind of a conflict of interest. That's not who I report to, that's not what I understood the job to be, and I'm looking to you, the three of you, and your attorney, for advice. How do you want me to handle this? If you want me to go forward with it, fine, I got no issues with that, I'll walk away. But but I want to know directly from you guys how this is supposed to be handled. I'm still trying to decide if I'm going to attend our meeting on Thursday, because I've been requested to attend the meeting.
For what reason?
They have not said.
Oh.
But I'm assuming it is because of the attorney, and I had them, I asked Ty to have the attorney come to the last meeting after they'd already made this change and how our budgeting process was going to go. And so I'm here to tell, I asked Ty to do that. I don't want to throw Ty under the bus. It's on me. And I have talked to our attorney about this also, but I'm looking for you guys for direction.
Any comments?
Well, I think you have every right, as President of the Plan Commission, to have legal attorneys there. If you feel you need it, you should have it there. You have a contract with Derek Jones, and if they don't want to pay Derek, then Derek can go across the street and sue them.
Okay.
As far as I'm concerned, because this is ridiculous. We are going, this county is set to have all kinds of lawsuits filed against us just because of this reason, because they're picking and choosing who you can talk to and who you can't to can't talk to, or who can come in and ask for a variance on property. This is ridiculous. This, you are your own body, an appointed body. You're not elected, and this is this is truly ridiculous.
Well, I will, I want to say this out loud, and so all three of you know that, if I can't have legal representation at that meeting, I am not interested in talking to solar or electric battery storage thing. I'm not going to put it on the agenda, because to me, I'm subjecting this county to very large lawsuits. I think that's wrong. So by me refusing to put it on the agenda, that's going to allow that, I feel, it's going to allow that company to sue us for not hearing, allow them to have the hearing. So I I'm kind of caught. I don't want to, I don't want the county to get sued for not putting it in here, but I'm also not interested in getting sued for handling something inappropriately at a meeting.
I will tell you, I sat in that seat, matter of fact, I was there when you was appointed, voted for you to be appointed to that board. I sat in that seat, well, I sat on the board about 14 years, I think, 13, 14 years. I sat in the president's seat about half of that. I always felt I had the right to bring an attorney in, but I also had to make sure I had the money to pay for it.
I understand that, too.
I didn't have the money to pay for it, I didn't bring them in.
Well, then I can't hear, I can't put them on the agenda then.
And so that that would be my comment.
And I suspect that's what their goal was anyway, because I don't want to subject the county to any large lawsuits that they're unnecessary. So, like I said, you were on both sides of defense here.
I will make another point. I've asked for a moratorium a couple times, it's never went anywhere. I asked in the Plan Commission for recommendation, I asked here, okay? You had a moratorium in place, you could have all these open discussions, never a fear of of legal repercussions until you work things out.
But here's the problem, here's the problem with that, Stan, is ours are only recommendations. The Plan Commission only recommends to you guys, why would I recommend something that that's dead? It's not going to happen. So I, you know, I'm caught. I can't win in this whole situation. And and I assume, I think my seat, and I checked this morning, I'm on the on the Plan Commission till 2025, December 2025, or maybe it's some sometime, I've been on there a lot of years, not as many as you were, but I've been on there five, six years now, and it's been an honor. But this last two years, we'll word it that way, has not been a pleasant experience by any measure. I'm trying to dot all the i's, trying to cross all the t's. I want everybody to be heard, both sides should be able to hear. I get phone calls they just shouldn't be getting sometimes, but that's life. I've been there before. So you're aware of my dilemma. I plan to proceed as I have in the past, if if that means I suggest, you know, this is me, my editorial, I says what was going to end up happening, I suggest is we're going to have the county suing the county. You know, and and to be blunt, the county's going to be paid both sides of that legally. It is stupid. The county's going to be suing the county because we're not doing the job we were appointed to do. Not what you wanted to hear, but that's.
If we're going to go down this route, we might as well not even have a Plan Commissioner just close the county up and say, we don't own any new business.
That's.
The doors are closed here in Marshall County.
So, you know, and I know it's a hot potato, there's no, there's no good answer, there's no warm and fuzzy in this one.
There's a state statute that has your powers and your duties. I'm sure Derek's told you this.
Yes.
And and so the state is saying to the counties, you know, you're going to do land use issues, and you have a Plan Commission, and it's an apolitical body. It has Democrats, and it has Republicans, and it has people that have to fit this appointment, and you appoint people, good people, to help make these decisions. And they are, by state statute, have these powers and the duties, one of which includes the fact that you're entitled to an attorney. And, you know, you've got a contract with an attorney, you know, I I don't, I don't see how, in really good faith, we can not conduct business as it's been designed to do. The Plan Commission and the BZA are both state statutory established, separate commissions and and it's, it's, I understand you're just a recommendation body, but that's the way the state wanted to set it up. That's how they planned to do it. You know, ultimately, it comes back to elected officials to make the calls after your recommendations. But I I think if a if an applicant comes to you and wants to have business done, I don't know how you cannot conduct that business. I get it that, you know, they're trying to say you should have, you know, in hindsight, it would have been nice for your director to say, oh, I'm going to have all this extra business today, so my budget needs to be higher. But it's, it's just like if the courts don't budget enough money, they don't close up business because they can't, they come back to the county and say, you got to fund our business, and it's just, you're in the same situation. It's different than the highway department, it's different than veterans, it's different than department heads, that's a different, total different story. The state statute requires you to be doing your thing.
Thank you.
Like the BZA, that's a quasi judicial board.
Quasi judicial board.
They're just like a judge.
Well, quasi judicial.
Yeah.
But you're right. I mean, if you don't do those things, you are opening the county up for that lawsuit.
Okay. I've said what I wanted to say, you're aware. I feel I've done my responsibility.
Mike, you have anything?
I I agree with this conversation wholeheartedly, that the the Plan Commission is being held hostage by the county council, and that the president, if he feels that he needs legal representation, should be able to have legal representation to avoid the county and the Plan Commission and us from being sued. I mean, it just, it makes sense to me, but logic has gone out the window a long time ago.
So I feel that if you need representation at your next meeting, call Derek in and have him come in, and then we'll just figure out how to pay him. Either one way or the other, he's going to get paid.
Sure.
Because he's under contract.
I define a contract, a contract such as we have with our county attorney, says we pay you a minimum every month, correct? And then so much an hour after that.
I don't know what Derek's contract says, but Derek's contract may say, I'm going to attend all of the Plan Commission meetings. I think that's what his contract says.
And historically, he probably had enough money in his budget, but with the solar and the battery, he's had to put more time into it. And part of his time is if the solar gets approved, then he will get reimbursed back from the solar company for Derek's bill.
That's the plan right now.
That's the plan right now. But if it doesn't go through, then we're still on the hook. But I feel you need to do what you need to do.
Yep.
I'll support you.
Thank you.
I go on record saying you need to have the money when you hire the guy, but that's just, I'm sure it's two to one.
Well, they had the money when they hired the guy, but there's been so many things going on at the Plan Commission level.
Again, I go back to the point, if you had a moratorium, you wouldn't be worrying about all this.
Well, you just have a moratorium until January 1st.
All right.
That's all you want.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, move on to commissioner items. Battery storage subcommittee appointment. We've been asked to appoint somebody on that committee. I don't know how long this committee is going to last, but if it goes in.
I make a motion to appoint Mike Burrows to the battery storage subcommittee.
Second. I'll just make a comment, I think it should be me, because if it goes in next year, Mike won't be here, but.
Well.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Next item is the ARCA subcommittee recommendation. We met, and like I say, our recommendation was to fund the road, Union Road repayment, and also the balance of that to go toward, balance whatever's in ARCA committee, it could be, well, in this case, it would be $150,000 to go towards new computers for the election, or not, computers, the.
Stations.
Pole pads. For the clerk's office, she's been told that she has a couple, needs to replace them, they're wore out, and they can't get parts for them. The only parts they can get is used, so they've given her four years, they feel, by the, not this coming November, but four years from now, they should be replaced as their recommendation. So that was kind of our committee, subcommittee recommendation, but that can be taken up later.
I think Jack Garner was in here a few weeks ago, a few meetings ago, talking about the new portable radios for the sheriff's department for the officers. I think it was 135 or 150,000. I think that's a much more urgent need to give these officers the resources that they need to communicate with. As you see in the news, 30 and 31, with all the drug arrests and everything else, we're putting some of them officers at risk if we don't give them the right communications.
Well, and I sent you guys an email the other day after we had the Public Safety Committee meeting, that was discussed, there is.
It sounded like it was just a.
It was just a discussion at that time.
It was just a discussion, just.
Yeah, and and.
It's all show.
Looking, I wouldn't say that, but that's fine, looking at helping all the towns and counties so they'd be on the same system, doing some sort of a match to replace all them. So that's where it's at at this time. But again, that's just a discussion. I don't want to give anybody the false impression, but there was support for that. So you want to, I mean, I guess nothing has to be done today. But that was the recommendation. So again, the final determination falls with the commissioners, so, okay? And then the innkeeper's distribution, Angie?
Yeah, we had, as you know, tourism, we set up a new tourism commission, and they were getting all of their ducks in a row, so.
So normally what happens during our annual, our semi-annual settlement, we disperse all the tax dollars, property tax dollars we've collected, along with some various other taxes. Innkeepers is usually part of that process, but due to the changes in the board, they were establishing bank accounts. We did not do that dispersment. They requested that, so I had reached out to you, the three of you, to pay that, so I'm looking for ratification of paying out those innkeeper tax dollars.
And that is to the new board?
That is to the new board. The amount was $215,381.57. And then they will receive another draw in December, along with the regular settlement dollars that go out. They will be ready for the, to get back on course for the semi-annual settlement.
I make a motion to approve the distribution of $215,381.01 and some odd cents to the innkeepers.
Second.
Motion made, second to...
Or to the tourism, sorry.
Motion made, second to have the auditor go ahead and do the payout to the new tourism board in an amount of $215,381.51. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And the other one, I don't see maintenance here...
John left.
But maintenance was a purchase of a snow removal vehicle for $8,000. I need a ratification for that. It was a purchase that he found in Rochester, and I think it was more time-sensitive purchase.
Yep.
I'm making a motion to approve the purchase of the snow removal equipment for the maintenance department.
Second.
Can I ask, does that need to be shown as a prepay, Angie?
Yeah, that's what this is.
As a prepay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Second. Okay. Motion made, second to approve the purchase of the snow removal equipment for the high deep, highway department, excuse me, maintenance department, excuse me, and do it as a prepay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You got anything else?
All I've got.
You got anything else, Mike?
No.
Got anything else, Kevin?
Make a motion to adjourn, unless you got something.
Nope.